Great. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regularly scheduled September 22, 2021 school committee meeting at 6:00 p.m. At this time, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining, ongoing litigation, and personnel matters.
I'll make that motion.
Second. I have a motion in a second to enter into executive session. Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene our regularly scheduled meeting at 6:30. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the September 22 regular school committee meeting at 6:37 PM. The September 22 regular school committee meeting will be televised and recorded and may be viewed live on Comcast Channel 22, Verizon Channel 34, and/or at YouTube/TuxburyTV.com. Under the open meeting law, the public is permitted to make an audio or video recording of an open session at a public meeting. At this time, I would ask that if anyone is recording tonight's meeting to please identify himself or herself. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd ask our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, to lead us in the pledge, please.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Mr. Jack Stadman in the house tonight. I'd like to call up Mr. Jack Stadman for our student report, please.
Chairman, please.
Yep.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to remind everyone that this is a school environment, and right now, we are under a mask requirement from Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and I'd like to ask all audience members to make sure they're masked at this time.
For those of you that do not have a mask, as Superintendent Malone said, the school rules are crystal clear. Masks are to be worn in all schools. There is no exemptions noted for municipal meetings. If you don't have a mask, I would please ask you, I think, Mrs. Regan, did you put a pile of masks somewhere? I'm going to ask one final time, if you don't have a mask, to please get up and get We're not going to conduct our business if people aren't following the rules. I'm going to ask one final time, if you do not have a mask, I am asking you, urging you, to please get yourself a mask.
Do you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for a recess.
I have a motion and a second to take a five-minute recess. Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene at 6:46 PM. Thank you. The Chair votes aye as well. We will reconvene at 6:46 PM. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the meeting at 6:59, and I'd like to thank you all for your patience. All right, could we try Mr. Jack Stadman again? Welcome, Jack.
Thank you for having me back. For recent news, our Tewksbury High School DECA team has just once again started up again. If any students are interested, they can fill out the form by scanning the QR codes around the school. DECA members will also be participating in the townwide cleanup in early October. The TMHS Drama Club is working on their latest production of Clue. Both cast and crew have been working diligently on creating an unforgettable performance for each and every person. All classes at Tewksbury Memorial High School recently held their elections. Stay tuned until Thursday, also known as tomorrow, for election results. Good luck to all that ran, and an early congratulations to all that won. The National Honors Society is running a hurricane relief drive. They're collecting donations to send to all the victims of the recent hurricanes. All donations can be dropped off either near the office or in the library. The Student Council is still holding their weekly meetings on Thursday mornings, not Wednesdays. They are currently planning new upcoming Spirit Days for all students to participate in and have fun in. That's mandatory. The morning update is still broadcasting live every morning. You can tune in on YouTube to catch the latest in-school updates. And last but certainly not least, the International Club will also be participating in the townwide cleanup. If you'd like to join them, please see Mrs. Dudley on the third-floor language hallway. And thank you. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Stadman. Mrs. Regan is... who's doing the trip?
All right. Mr. Chairman and members of the committee, tonight with us is Bailey Mahoney. Bailey is one of our Tewksbury Memorial High School World Language teachers, certainly not a stranger to traveling with students abroad. Bailey's here tonight to share with you the details of a United States National Parks trip and seek your permission to move forward with this trip. Bailey has a presentation to share with you.
Right, we're just going to slide off, so we're out of the way.
Mr. Lee, can you help us out here?
Bailey, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for taking the time to go over this exciting trip to U.S. National Parks, specifically to the Grand Canyon, Bryce Canyon, and Zion National Park. This is a trip I've been working on over the summer and beginning of the school year with Mr. Bernard, so we are both pretty excited to present this trip to you. So this trip would be run through EF. It's the same company we use for pretty much every trip we've taken. The itinerary is in detail in the packets you hopefully received from Mr. Bernard earlier, but this is kind of just a brief overview. It's a six-day trip, spending about a day to day and a half each park. And some of the exciting things the students would get to do would be a float trip down the Colorado River. They would also get to do some stargazing at Bryce Canyon National Park. They get to visit the Lowell Observatory, which I didn't know was a thing, so that's kind of a fun connection to us as well. And they get to visit Sedona and take a hike around the overlook there as well. So it should be exciting. It's outdoors. I think this would be a fun six days for our students to take. We would be looking to go around April vacation, so running concurrently with the Costa Rica trip. We talked about several things with this trip, and why this one in particular stood out is it appeals to students who want to travel but may not be interested in going internationally just yet. It also appeals to students who prefer the outdoor things, oftentimes our European trips or some of the other trips tend to be museums and historical sites. And this is a little more hands-on for those students who prefer those opportunities. It also provides an opportunity for students to visit new states or locations and learn more about U.S. history, geography, culture, and specifically, culture of the Southwest. There are opportunities to work with the indigenous groups that live in these areas, so that would be a new experience for a lot of students as well. Mostly outdoor activities, so this does provide a safer environment during the pandemic. And this is a nice way to ease back into traveling for those who are still hesitant to travel, especially traveling internationally, so it's still within the states, and we can monitor things a little closer there. And last but not least, we're hoping that by April break, we'll be back to better or back to kind of where we were last spring, or hopefully even better as a country. So that gives us some time to kind of see how things are going. As far as their COVID protocols, these would be the same for both Costa Rica trip and for this trip, is that there is a safe traveler agreement. Students would have to sign, parents would have to sign. They would be required to take a PCR test within 72 hours of flight, and they would want to keep proof of a negative test with them throughout the tour. That is something that as chaperones, we could handle and keep all that stuff in our handy binder full of all of our important information. And this could change depending on location requirements, depending on if some of the places we go may require a vaccine. That's up to local authorities as we travel. If students were somehow diagnosed or exposed while on tour and required to quarantine, EF does have a policy in place that is also in the packets that were sent out. And part of that includes figuring out flights if parents need to be brought to the location. Masks are required on buses at all times, just like they are for our students now, and when regulated by local authorities. EF will provide some extra masks and hand sanitizer, and we would also make sure the chaperones have all of those things for our students as well to keep them safe. There is a dedicated motor coach just for our students that will be cleaned frequently throughout the trip, and EF is working with hotels for enhanced safety protocols. That's it.
Mrs. Regan, can we have Mr. Druin while we're on the side, and then we'll take these one at a time?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just want to introduce Mr. Druin, our athletic director, to do a presentation on the portion of our elementary school building project that is actually pretty much complete, which is the athletic complex, which we think will have a significant impact on our students, on our coaches, and on the community. It's also had a great impact on the Ryan School to give freedom up from a status of a construction zone that they've been in for a while and have some available space outside now to utilize as well. With that, enough to Mr. Druin.
Thank you for your time. The new project got finished. We moved in September 1st. As you can see here, here's a shot of our last game that was at Doucette Stadium on Thanksgiving morning. This was the last version, you know, last game played on the old field. This is the new concept, the new stadium. We took a panoramic picture last night. We had a boys' soccer game. Tewksbury hosted North Andover and was believed to be the first night soccer game in the history of Tewksbury High School we played last night. The complex is beautiful. You know, I saw a bunch of people that have seen a bunch of games there, and it's a beautiful facility. They recaptured a lot of the rocks from the old building and the old fieldhouse. They literally chiseled them out of the cement and have built an entranceway with all the old rocks. And the lentele, the James Z. Brooks Fieldhouse lentele, have been recaptured and built into the entranceway. Really classy, touched by the construction team, and it came out great. to sanitize nightly. Second floor on the opposite side of the building is a turf area, um, we can do any kind of, you know, fitness work up there, any, any rehab with our athletic trainer, he has his office up there, uh, team meetings. If you look up into the top corner, you can see like a bench seating along the window all around the entire perimeter of the building, which I think is a great feature, is a bench, it is bench seating along the window, so there's no need for chairs anywhere up there. Uh, you, you know, we can have team meetings up there for any of our sport teams, and you could, you know, the walls are all white or lighter colors, so you could show film off the walls and not need a projector. Um, any kind of theraband stretching, anything like that. Um, I met with the booster groups last night for soccer and field, uh, for soccer, and, um, you know, we'll have all our senior night activities and our gatherings will be upstairs, up, up there in the, uh, on the turf area, so, um, it can be used for, you know, many That's a view of the crowd Friday night, and we were almost full on the home side, um, packed house, and, and it was, it was great. You could see the press box there, you could see the, uh, the gray structure next to the press box is the handicap lift that takes you right up to a platform, so if any, you know, buddy that needed to get into the, uh, press box, there's a, there's a handicap lift, and then there's a platform for anybody that needed access to get up there as well. That is a view of our student section, uh, all in white, Friday night, uh, right in front of the cheerleaders, it was, it was great, we probably had 150 or so kids up in that section, they did a great job. Um, and then our field is lined five ways, so this fall we'll have, um, three night football games, we'll have three field hockey games, three girls soccer games, three boys soccer games, field's lined five ways, um, soccer's, you know, soccer's the widest set of lines, field hockey, football, um, girls and boys across have two different, it's called the fan, two different fan areas in front of the net, so it's lined five ways, uh, for multi-use. And then, you know, I went over there this morning for something, and the Ryan School was running PE on the turf, it was great, you can run field days there, uh, unify, our unified sports teams can work out there, um, any of our senior nights can take place there, youth sport, you know, any kind of youth sports that needs to take place within the town, so, um, it's, it's a great asset for the community. Friday night, we honored all our fall, all our fall varsity teams, there's, um, some cut-up pictures of all our, our teams that are across the field, uh, we, we had a real good showing, a shout-out to our captains for organizing all their teams. Um, it, it's a thing that we like to do with our night games, is kind of recognize all our fall athletes in the fall, early in the season, uh, we had a good turnout, and, you know, I, I believe in it, I believe in recognizing all our kids in front of some of the crowds, and we did a good job with that. Most importantly, Friday night, we got a win, which was, um, you know, our first win on the field, and, and, uh, we beat Lowell 28-14, so anytime you get a W, I think that's a, a positive. And last, I, I certainly, uh, speak for a lot of people, you know, we want to thank Mr. Montori, our town manager, Mr. Malone, our superintendent, Mrs. Regan, our assistant superintendent, the school committee, uh, the elementary building committee, the athletic field committee, and then the residents of Tuxbury for supporting this. Without that, we would, uh, not have the fine, fine facility that we have. That facility, um, puts us second to none, uh, with, with our athletic complexes, so. Any questions?
I will start with our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian.
I have no questions, um, well, actually, I just have one question, and I, I have asked you this in the past, but in terms of use, um, for the lifting room, um, that's open to all sports, all?
All sports, all teams, supervised lifts.
Yeah, great, yeah, but it's fantastic, thank you for your hard work.
No problem. My pleasure.
Yeah. Mr. Parsons?
Yeah, I have a question about the trip, do we want to focus on athletic? Get through this? Okay, so, I have none with the athletic, silly.
Okay. Mr. Stadman?
Uh, no, I think it looks great, um, you know, you've been, you know, working with everybody and, uh, appreciate everything, you know, you and the, uh, rest of the, the coaching staff has been with, with all of us, and, uh, being involved at, you know, the multiple councils and crews across everybody, and it's been a great, uh, adventure for all of us, and it's great to have the first W on the, on the field and things like that, so.
They, they put that together in 14 months.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Shovel in the ground to finish, 14 months, that's amazing.
It's crazy.
Amazing.
It's crazy.
Uh, obviously, just, and you had it in caps, I like to see it, a huge thank you, um, to our residents, obviously, um, we've had tremendous support in Tuxbury for schools, we had trend, uh, tremendous support for that facilities, um, kids learn in all different ways, and it's wonderful to have, um, such an awesome state-of-the-art environment, um, that we have, so kudos to you and thank you. And with that, I'll ask, uh, Mrs. Mahoney, if she'd come back up, and I'll start with, uh, Mr. Parsons.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ronnie.
All right. So just in the interest of equitable access to this trip, um, I'd hate for cost to be a deterrent to kids being able to go on it, um, could you just speak on what financial supports are available to students, um, in past trips, or if there are any planned now?
There's not been anything in the past that I'm aware of, um, I know that's something we've talked about as a travel committee, and we're still trying to kind of figure out how we can do that, but at this moment, it's, there's nothing that we have scholarship-wise. We've talked about starting one, we're just still kind of in that process.
Okay, and then, um, if anything comes to mind, how this committee could assist with that, um, please reach out.
I, yeah, absolutely, great.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons, Mrs. Garabedian.
Hi, um, thank you for coordinating this, the trip looks awesome, it looks really great, it would be an awesome opportunity for any of the kids to attend. Um, I'm assuming this is for all four grades?
Yes, yeah, anyone, uh, nine through 12 can attend.
Okay, and then I think, as you're probably aware, you know, with trips in the past, some of the big hurdles with COVID was, you know, the, you know, reimbursement and things like that. I happened to notice that if there was any sort of, um, deferment of the trip, that you would receive a voucher?
Yes, so there's a couple different options, um, if we defer, so last year, the seniors were able to either take a voucher for the entire price and use it towards a future trip, which for the seniors, that's great, EF does a college trip as well, I did one in college and it was phenomenal. Um, they can also, if they have a younger sibling, pass it on to them, um, or they can get, um, all their money back minus $500 to cover those booking costs and things that the company just gave them back.
Okay, um, yeah, I guess those are my two questions, and, um, but like Mr. Parsons, I think it would be great to find a way for students to offset that.
Absolutely.
Make it affordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mr. Stadman?
No, some of the other questions were asked, I, I think it's a great trip, I mean, we've been out there, kind of jealous of going, you know, one week and seeing all these great, great sights, but I wish you the, I wish you the best of luck on this.
And I'll just echo what my colleague said, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our students. Um, are you looking for our approval this evening?
Yes, please, if possible.
Sure, great, with that, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to approve, uh, the TMHS domestic trip to National Parks as presented here this evening, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the TMHS domestic trip to National Parks. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well, that's a unanimous vote, congratulations, and thank you for offering this trip to our students.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion. Could I make a motion for a five-minute break?
Second.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second to take a five-minute recess from 7:20 to 7:25. Mr. Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mrs. Garabedian, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Stadman, how do you vote?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. We'll reconvene at 7:25. I'd like to call the meeting back to order at 7:28 PM. With Mr. Drewin gone, that takes us to Citizens Forum, is there anyone here wishing to speak to anything on tonight's agenda?
Yes, uh, 305 School Street.
And your name?
Connor Burgoyne, president of Tuxbury Teachers Association.
Is School Street, is that Tuxbury?
No, it's Waldham.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Please proceed, you have three minutes.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Committee, good evening, Mr. Parsons, Ms. Garabedian, Mr. Stadman, Mr. Chairman Sullivan, Miss DeWes, who's not with us today. I speak because I want you to look around first. I speak because I want you to look around for a second. Please look around this auditorium. These teachers and aides come in day in and day out, and they want these kids in Tewksbury to succeed. But right now, both groups, the aides and the teachers, are without a contract. Now, the negotiation team in good faith has tried to come down to compromise with the school committee. We are growing frustrated, and we really would like this to get resolved. These members made sacrifices to be here because they believe that this contract getting resolved is one of the utmost important things for teachers, aides, and students. So, to conclude this, I please implore all four of you and Ms. Demos to please consider the most recent proposals we have made, and please get both the aides and the teachers a contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Ellen C. Fifteen Kenneth Lane.
Good evening.
I would like to talk about how the priorities of the town seem to be slightly off because while I think Mr. Drew in his field are fantastic, my kids won't be playing on that field because they don't do sports in Tewksbury. However, they do go through the educational system in Tewksbury. And as we just saw, there's a great deal of people in this room who are very unhappy. And my personal idea, being a former teacher, is that the money that we spend on athletics in this town could be better diverted towards activities that affect everyone, and everyone goes through the school system. So if the school system is having trouble paying their teachers, maybe they need to redirect the funding to make sure that the teachers are paid properly. Because as we all know, unhappy employees tend to not do the best job possible. And this is a good group of people. My kids have had excellent teachers in this system. They've had fantastic teachers in this system. And the truth of the matter is, my kids are special ed, okay? And as I said, they're not going to play sports in this town, but they will go through the school system. So if we want to continue to pretend that there are no problems and everything is sunshine and rainbows, we can continue to do that. However, the cracks are definitely getting thicker and thicker, and you don't have to look very hard to see them, okay? There are a lot of unhappy people in this town, and if we continue to ignore them, eventually it's going to end up getting worse and worse and worse. And as I said, teachers without contracts, teachers that continue to work and do a great job for the kids. However, think about what it is to have the lack of confidence in your skills that people continue to tell you that you're not going to get what you're asking for. Now, as I said, sports are great. I love baseball. I love hockey. But I can do without them because when they had the strikes, I did all right. My kids still need to go to school, and they still need to get an education. And unfortunately, if we continue to reprioritize things, we're going to have a lot of problems. And as I said, I didn't even know the teachers were going to be here tonight. But the truth is, I'm glad they are. So I think we need to continue to look at what's going on and how can we fix things? How can we make things better? Not how can we ignore them? And as I said, I think at this point in time, sports are great, but not everybody plays sports, but everybody goes through the school system. So priorities should be the school system and the teachers. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, that's going to close out Citizens Forum for this evening. I'm going to turn it over to our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, for our approval of minutes.
So first, for Wednesday, August 18th, I make a motion to approve meeting minutes. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the August 18th School Committee Regular Meeting Minutes. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well, and the workshop as well, Mrs. Garabedian?
Yes, and make a motion to approve the workshop meeting minutes for the School Committee Administrative Workshop on Wednesday, August 18th at 2:00 PM.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the August 18th, 2021 School Committee and Administration Workshop. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. And I'll stay with you, Mrs. Garabedian, for the payroll.
Yep, I move the school department payroll for the period ending 8/19/2021 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,313,160.61.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending August 19th, 2021 in the sum of $1,313,160.61. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well, unanimous vote.
Okay, I move the school department payroll for the period ending 9/2/2021 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,409,390.21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending September 2nd, 2021 in the amount of $1,409,390.21. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Chair votes aye as well, unanimous vote. And our final payroll, Mrs. Garabedian?
I move the school department payroll for the period ending 9/16/2021 to be approved and certified in the amounts and categories as shown for a total amount of $1,402,768.68.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the payroll period ending September 16th, 2021 in the amount of $1,402,768.68. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, unanimous vote. Thank you very much, Mrs. Garabedian. I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Malone for his superintendent report.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of quick updates. The search for the North Street Elementary School interim principal committee has commenced. We will be conducting interviews this week, hopefully come up with a suitable interim candidate as soon as possible. Ms. Cronin's last day is on September 28th. We may have to do an overlap of a combination of lead teachers step up and some other administrators from the district to certainly support North Street between the time we are able to make a hire and when that person will be able to start. But we're pretty confident that we can certainly keep operations going well at the North Street School. Just as an update in relation to the impact of COVID, I'd like to congratulate all students, parents, staff, everyone involved for a very successful and smooth opening. As far as student issues and regular education issues, we've had a very smooth opening. We'll continue to work in that vein. In regards to the current dashboard case amount, currently we show 24 cases of COVID in the district right now. That actually went down one since earlier today. A huge thank you to our nursing staff who has done a tremendous job with the new guidance specific to test and stay in close contacts. We have put ourselves in a situation where far more students are staying in school, and they do not have to isolate at home. However, that is a huge lift for our nurses to make sure that whether in the test and stay, those students are tested daily, or confirm that they're vaccinated, or checking in on symptoms. So it is a great benefit that we can have more students and staff who are in close contact stay with us in the building. But it is a big piece, and we're looking to see where we can help our nurses in this piece. But hats off to Kelly Constantino and the entire nursing staff. They've been going above and beyond to support us in keeping as many students and staff in school as possible. Our most recent vaccination rate data as a town, between the ages of 12 and 15 as a town, we're showing a first dose minimum. In other words, individuals have at least one shot in them at 55% across the town at ages 12 to 15. The state average is 66%. At the age group of 16 to 19, we are showing a 74% at least a single dose in the arm of individuals in town, and that is better than the state average, which is 70%. So we'll continue to monitor those vaccination rates and see what type of impact that has on the school district. The State Board of Education met yesterday in Malden. One of the topics of discussion was going to be in relation to the commissioner's determination on or about October 1st about what the next steps would be made specifically relating to COVID, specifically relating to vaccination rates and masking. They did have a disruption in the meeting. There was a fire alarm, and the meeting ended rather quickly. So we haven't gotten any further guidance as of yet. We'll be waiting to see what comes out of DESE in their near future in regards to that. But again, you know, with the challenges of COVID, the students are coming to school daily, they're doing a great job. The teachers, the aides, the custodians, the cafeteria workers, the secretaries, our nurses, as I said, everyone's really pitching in and doing a great job, and we're very thankful for that. Also a notification that Tewksbury Public Schools has been selected randomly by DESE for an onsite comprehensive accountability review. So that is a new element in relation to DESE, and we'll be getting more information on that as time goes by. And a reminder that the school committee and many district administrators will be taking part in the open meeting law training coming up in October, so we're looking forward to that. I'd also like to address a clerical update in the K-4 Student Handbook in regards to home and hospitalization tutoring. There's an update needed there in regards to DESE regulation. Certainly, the handbooks are in the purview of the school committee. What has been past practice, if there were clerical updates during the year, that typically the school committee would delegate to me to go ahead and update that. If that's how we'd like to continue, that's fine. If not, we can certainly have a presentation ready for next month and go through that. It is a clerical update in regards to a regulatory piece, but I'm not sure if the committee would be comfortable with the practice, continued practice of myself updating those pieces in the handbooks just to make sure they're current, or if you would like to take a more formal presentation view of it.
Okay, we'll start with our clerk, Mrs. Garabedian, your thoughts?
I'm comfortable with it. If you could just share with us what you update, when it's updated.
Absolutely.
You know, in the statute or whatever.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Parsons?
I have the same thought as Bridget. As long as we're up to date, I don't see a problem with that.
Great. Mr. Stadman?
I concur.
I'm okay with that as well. Thank you, Superintendent Malone.
And just a reminder, the townwide PAC will be next Monday at 6:00 PM here at Tewksbury Memorial High School in LGI-1. We're also almost fully through the open house process. We had conducted several orientations for students and parents this year in person that went very well. We were a little bit concerned with the open houses, that some of the parents weren't quite comfortable coming into the school to see the teachers. And we actually polled the schools and talked to the staff, and they feel like they actually had better turnouts when we had it virtually. So we chose to do the open houses to start the year virtually. We'll certainly continue to analyze that data and information as time goes on. Certainly, the rate of the pandemic will help us make some of those decisions. We do think in-person is always better, but we had the added piece that actual attendance and participation by parents when we were virtual actually increased. So we'll continue to look at those pieces and see which is the best match for us moving forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if there are any questions?
Great. Mrs. Garabedian?
No questions. Hopefully, you know, you'll track that virtual open house piece and see if that is a successful thing to carry on or go back to the old school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
I have no questions.
Mr. Stadman?
No questions, thank you.
And I don't have any questions either. Thank you for that update, Mr. Malone. I'd like to ask Mrs. Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Believe it or not, I'm going to start with opening day. Can you imagine August 30th and August 31st, only 16 school days ago, that we opened the Tewksbury Public Schools with our first two professional development days for our staff? That included COVID safety planning for the return to school. The changes and constraints and unintended benefits we all learned from the school year 2021. One of those changes and unintended benefits is what Mr. Malone was just talking about, that virtual open house practice that actually helped more parents attend open house. And then, of course, the DESI acceleration roadmap towards academic recovery with a major focus on how we can foster belonging for all students and families as they all come back and implement social-emotional learning strategies in every classroom and learning environment. I can speak for myself and the other district leadership team as we watched students get off buses at every school and towards some of those classrooms and saw many happy student faces and happy teacher and staff faces as we were all back in-person learning. So thank you to our faculty, our staff, our administrative team, our students and families from such a smooth start back to the school year. As you know, September 1st marked the first day for our students to come back. We also received a notice from the Office of the Governor awarding us a $20,000 grant through Fund Code 151 to integrate social-emotional learning into our academic learning program. This grant will fund some of the academic recovery for our eighth-grade students at the WIN with a focus on service learning to foster their social-emotional development. ESER III Grant. So the American Rescue Plan of 2021 has an education component called the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund, in this case, ARP ESER, or the ESER III. The Tewksbury Public Schools is slated to receive approximately $2.77 million in ESER III that is to be used by September 30th of 2024. The grant application is due from the district this October 4th of 2021. ESER III has some new requirements. For example, in your consent agenda, you'll see the district survey that went out to TPS School Community Stakeholders. That was a requirement of the grant, that we focus on all those types of stakeholders and the ways in which we may specifically use 20% of our grant, which is approximately $554,000 of the funds, towards learning loss. The survey, as I said, is in your consent agenda. Our survey closed yesterday, and we received 565 responses. I want to thank everybody who did fill out the survey. It was, while only four questions, a little tedious to read through. Once we complete the grant, another requirement of this ESER III grant, once we receive approval of the grant, I should say, those plans for the grant will be published to our website. September 11th, 2021 marked the 20th anniversary of the 9/11 tragedy in our country. I want to thank all of our staff and students for their contributions to this year's 20th 9/11 anniversary memorial. First, thank you to our Tewksbury Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, as they always lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance at that event. Our Project 351 alumni, Mackenzie Hickey, from here at Tewksbury Memorial High School, also worked together with Principal John Bernard and Lead Art Teacher Nicole Lapierre to create a gratitude banner where students and staff wrote messages of gratitude to first responders and to active and veteran military members. The banner is displayed here at the high school, and will include an invite to the Tewksbury Fire Department Chief Joe Kearns and Tewksbury Police Department Chief Ryan Columbus to be included in the celebration of the completion of that banner. If I could bold, underline, highlight a huge thank you to Celeste Pellegrino, our Tewksbury Memorial High School music teacher, chorus director, and performance band director. Celeste and her musicians and singers truly stole everyone's heart at the 9/11 annual ceremony in the center of town. In addition, our young In addition, our young high school singers and musicians accompanied the Tewksbury Swinging Senior Center singers as well. I know I speak for all of us when I say just how proud I am of our staff and student and community contributions to that annual event. Again, thank you to Mackenzie, Nicole, John, Celeste, Vanessa, Gabriella, and all of our student performers. The program is also in your agenda if you'd like to see the many ways in which they contributed their talents. And finally, a reminder for our parents and guardians, the school closure, delayed opening, and emergency early release notice has been updated this year. We have shared this entire Tewksbury Public School communication through email, through Twitter, and it's published to our school website. The major change is the removal of the Remote Learning Day announcement and the return onto the notice of the school cancellation portion, as remote learning is no longer an option that we may currently use for inclement weather. That concludes my update.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Garabedian?
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Passons?
No questions.
Mr. Stadman?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, my only question, obviously, that's no remote date now, but with DESI that we're learning.
Correct.
Could be subject to change. Hopefully, it doesn't, but I just...
Remote learning days for inclement weather will not count towards our teaching and learning times, and there will be school cancellations for inclement weather as there always was in the past, at least at this current time.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. Regan? And our business manager, Mr. Libby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just got a brief transportation update for the committee. The well-documented and reported driver shortage that's facing nearby towns, districts across the state and the country fortunately hasn't hit us here in Tewksbury. Our good friends at Tewksbury Transit have been able to have drivers in the seats of all our big yellow buses and vans in town, and they actually have a couple more going through the process right now of being trained, a couple van drivers, and I think one more big yellow bus driver. So we should be in good shape on that front. To start the year, we had our sort of typical startup, usual minor hiccups here and there with some bus routes. We continue to get input from the bus company, from the schools, from families, and we'll continue to massage and tweak our bus routes and van routes to provide the best service we're able to provide for the students here in Tewksbury. A quick grant update, we received some exciting news that Tewksbury was awarded an extension to the 21st Century Grant Program at the Doing School through the exemplary programs grant. So we ran a three-year 21st Century Program at the Doing School through the 21st Century Grant, and as the title of this grant suggests, the program was exemplary and has been extended for three more years with the state. Congratulations to Dr. Bastieri, Principal Gerish, and the entire staff of the 21st Century Program at the Doing School for receiving that extension. It's great for kids, great opportunity after school, vacation weeks, summer programs that they can run at the school. The award initially for this year is for $148,750. Plus, we're also receiving a $20,000 additional COVID relief that's to be used for summer programming in the summer of '22, and additional $25,000 for high-quality project-based learning to be run through the program, for a total of $193,750 to run some after-school and out-of-school time programming for students at the Doing School. So congratulations to the school there, and that's great news for kids in the town.
Sure is. Thank you, Mr. Libby. Mrs. Garabedian?
Mr. Libby, one question. This grant for 21st Century, it's three years at the Doing specifically?
Yes.
So with the new school coming online, that grant will stay at the Doing?
I believe it will. We'll double-check on that, but I know it was very school-specific in the first round of funding we received.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much.
Mr. Passons?
Yeah, just on the same note, if the grant stays at the Doing, could students from other elementary schools still have access to it? Or is it exclusive to Doing students?
Unfortunately, they don't. We were able to find some other grant funding to use this summer for students from the Heathbrook School and ran the Heathbrook Penguin Pride Program with that funding. So we'll continue to look for those opportunities so that we have, you know, equitable access to services across the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stadman?
Changing gears, bus utilization routes versus two years ago. How up-down?
I would...
Versus like parent drop-offs and...
It seems to be up. I don't, we haven't done our official bus counts yet, but just anecdotally, it seems like we have more riders than we've had, than we had two years ago.
That's good.
It seems like a lot of people were interested in getting that bus experience for their students, more so than they had been in the past.
Excellent. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Libby, my only question, that 140 and then the additional funds, does that mean the following fiscal year? You said we got a three-year extension. Are we looking at another 140 for the following year?
Yeah, we're guaranteed the 148, 750, and the other additional money, you know, may be there again, but we definitely have the 148, 750.
Great.
For two more years beyond this.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. That's all I have. All right. Moving on to tonight's consent agenda, does anyone have any questions or comments on tonight's consent agenda? Nothing specific.
I just have one.
Okay. Mrs. Garabedian?
And Mrs. Regan, you might be able to answer better. We received the list of classroom sizes, so I assume that with the opening of the new school next year, some of those numbers will be a little more equitable in terms of class sizes?
Yes, we're currently looking at what those classroom sizes will look like as we think about the transition to the new school. So what all the second, if we can balance out the class sizes moving in, that would have to be done by the end of next school year so that we know when we move into the new school, it's equitable.
Okay. And then I also noticed our ninth grade class seems to have, seems to have fewer students than kind of comparable, you know, other grades. Is that because we had, has it always been kind of a low number grade?
Size is lows annually in student population, but I can't speak with great detail on the ninth graders, but I can certainly find out if we have any detail as to why the ninth grade may be slightly lower from last year.
I was just curious more if it was related to students, you know, going to other schools out of district, you know, with COVID.
Well, I'm going to look at Mr. Libby at the same time, but what we looked at was the, a similar frequency of students, let's say, going to the Shaw Tech, or to private schools that we've seen in the past. We haven't seen any great increase, and I can tell you that approximately half or more of our homeschool students that were out in homeschool last year are back in our schools this year.
Okay. Right. Just general curiosity. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mr. Passons?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay. Mr. Stadman?
I'm all set. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Just a quick shout-out to Vinnie in the VFW, this voice of democracy and Patriots Pen. Being on this committee for the years I have now, I can tell you what a wonderful program. We've had, boy, maybe I would say double digits in students since I've been on this committee, four and a half years, that have come in and have state placed either regionally or in the state. Some of them have even received money, and certainly with all that's going on in the world today, boy, these are wonderful programs. So, Vinnie, if you're out there watching, kudos to you, and we're looking forward to have our students participate again in that this year. So with that, what is the pleasure of the board at this time?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent agenda as presented this evening. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The chair votes aye as well. That's a unanimous vote. I do owe one apology to my colleague, Mrs. Demos, who had a work conflict in her district this evening. I meant to mention that at the start of the meeting. Certainly, my apologies to her. She did tell me she was going to be watching and will catch up with any information that she needs with the superintendent or the appropriate people in the morning. So with that being said, I'm going to ask Mr. Malone to give a quick update relative to the Elementary School Building Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Right now, we have some exciting pieces. We're finalizing some turnover of some of the Ryan School parking lot area, which has a complete new drainage system installed, all part of the new elementary building project, and newly paved parking lot and newly paved entrance way. And also with the fieldhouse, field complex, and other usable areas for the Ryan being turned over to us at this time. We've, what they've done is they've moved the construction fence to a tighter perimeter around the actual elementary school new building and given more space back to particularly the Ryan during the day and to the athletic complex for athletic events. So we're very excited to be at that, at that place. The access road that, when complete, that will go around the entire site is now about a little bit more than halfway within our usable zone, so that's also helpful. We've had some great conversations with Consigly, the main contractor, and they've been very cooperative about how they're parking their vehicles. They need to use some of this space during the workday as well, but we've worked out some, some great pieces on that. The main objective right now of the project is to finish the exterior and install the windows so that the building can become weather-tight here in the fall, so that in the wintertime, the full concentration of work can be on the interior of the building and really see that take shape. Once that has, once that building is winter-tight and weather-tight, and you can see the differences in the exterior that's coming up right now, once those exterior finishes have been complete, you really get to see the profile of the building, and we're pretty excited about it.
Thank you, Mr. Malone. And the Tewksbury CPAC, Mr. Passons?
Yes. So the September 23rd meeting has been changed to Thursday, September 30th. I received that update a little bit prior to this meeting, so it's very last minute. But you can find info on how to join this meeting on the Tewksbury CPAC Facebook page, on the town website, or by emailing tewksberrypac@gmail.com. We're also working through the logistics and continuing to build collaboration between the CPAC and our Special Education Department around programming for this upcoming year. So I'm sure there's some great events that'll be worked out soon. Other than that, no more to my update.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Passons. Appreciate it. And moving on to the Wellness Advisory Committee, Mrs. Garabedian?
So we had our first meeting today, which was fantastic, and I, from what I understand, the committee wasn't very functional last year due to COVID, so the goals of the meeting today were to reestablish the meeting. We're reaching out to students and community members. If anybody's interested in participating in the Wellness Committee, please reach out to Kelly Constantino, who's the lead nurse at the high school. Her email is on the website. And so it was mostly an organizational meeting. Our next upcoming meeting will be on November 10th at 3:30, and that's pretty much it, but it's promising.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. And our Policy Subcommittee, Mr. Stadman?
Yes, we had a meeting a few weeks back. We did have some residents there, and we do have two policies which we'll be reading shortly. We did have, go over some organizational details, and we'll be getting a meeting together shortly and some policies that we need to get reviewed as well. So more information to follow.
Great. Thank you. With that, that will take us right on to the policies, and I'll, just as a prelude, I would like to thank yourself and Mr. Passons for your hard work. I know we changed the way we're doing the policy, and I certainly, I know I can speak for everyone on the committee when we appreciate your time and your efforts working these policies through the Subcommittee Policy Review Board. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Stadman.
Okay, so we have Poly Recommendation for Revision, TPS Policy for Information Reading Only. It's JKAA, Physical Restraints of Students. And then second policy, Recommendation for Revision for, to TPS policy on the first reading is ACAB for Harassment.
Okay. And with that, I'm going to open up the floor to Mrs. Garabedian. As I said, I appreciate your guys' hard work, so it only makes sense to start with her if she has any questions or comments.
Again, I'll, you know, reiterate with Mr. Sullivan saying thank you so much to both of you for all this hard work and also with administration for helping. A couple of questions. In terms of why we are no longer defining the restraints and we're just deferring to, you know, to find them defined in, you know, 603 CMR 46.02, why did we take those out?
Yes, Mr. Malone. Physical restraints and now going back to CFR, CMR reference? I think we had discussed that during the meeting.
Right. So the actual regulation around restraint had actually changed in 2016.
Okay.
What hadn't been updated was how it was described in the handbook.
Okay.
Operationally and functionally, we had it all identified and updated within our sped operations, and in all our trainings were identified with the 2016 changes. Clerically, the, what was not updated, which was, I said handbook, excuse me, the policy.
Yeah.
Was the policy itself was not updated. I was not here at that time. There seems to be some evidence that there was an attempt to try to update it at the time, but at, at that time, I believe, I was in a different district at that time, and I know there was a big rush to make sure it was implemented correctly. I'm sure policies trailed, you know, after that.
Okay.
But is, what was described in our practice and our operations was immediately in alignment with the changes from 2016.
Okay.
So it was, it was a clerical update to the policy itself, really didn't have an impact on practice in any way.
And Mr. Pelletier was at our meeting.
Correct.
And he had mentioned that all of the staff was trained at that time.
Trained annually since 2000, and trained before 2016, trained in regards to the updated regulations post-2016 all along. In practice, there had, we were in complete compliance with that right from the get-go. What had just never been done was an update to the policy.
Okay. That makes complete sense. And then my other question was, in terms of like the specifics of how the restraints are managed and things like that, would that fall under the procedures that would later be defined by you?
Those, the special education procedures and pieces, policies are never designed to give specific designated approaches, interventions, things of that nature. No policy is. What it refers back to is the practices in the district to make sure they align with the regulation.
Okay.
The policies are not to go down to that level where they would dictate. What the policy really kind of does an overview of is alternatives to restraint, other interventions to look at, making sure that districts are thoughtful of all those other approaches, and really defining some terms in there. The actual practice of that is divine, determined in special education operations specifically. But again, all those have to align with the regulation.
Okay. Well, that makes sense, and so I think a lot of the changes make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. And Mr. Passons?
I have no questions on this, but I do just want to call attention to, I believe... I have no questions on this, but I do just want to call attention to, I believe, two days ago or yesterday, sometime earlier this week, the state did put out, and by state, I mean DESI, guidance on timeouts in other restraint exclusion type processes. Just as we continue to revise JKAA, just, I would like to just have that information shared with the committee and that reviewed at our next reading, just to make sure that we have all the information we can. And if we do need to update our policy, that we have that guidance to do that.
Good. Absolutely. I did see that guidance myself. I didn't take a deep dive into it, but I certainly know what you're referring to. And just as a reminder, this is just the first reading. The policy will not be passed tonight, so we certainly can undertake that work and any necessary changes. Thanks again for your work, Nick. Mr. Stadman?
I'm all set, Mr. Chair.
Okay. My only comment, and I'm not sure it's on the lines of the policy, but are we training our staff, Mr. Malone, in other strategies? I know you mentioned maybe de-escalation strategies, so we don't have to get to the point where we're, you know, having to, you know, use restraint?
Annually, we train our staff. The biggest piece typically with the vendors that provide restraint training, 75% of that training is de-escalation techniques, is verbal interventions, is preventive measures. Holds, restraints, other type, any type of physical intervention is an element of last resort. And no one even gets to that part of the training unless they've been able to master the de-escalation pieces and the other interventions, all part of the training. We've also solely offered the de-escalation techniques, for instance, last year with our aides and so forth like that. It's great training, and it's a great way to help all of our staff in difficult times. And we're all working in situations where we all want to help students. Students are in difficult situations, and we want to make sure everyone's trained and everyone's prepared.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Malone. That's all I have. And just one final reminder to the community, this is just the first reading. There will be, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, a second, and then a third and final. Correct?
Yep.
Okay. Is that the only questions that you have, Mrs. Garabedian? I'm sorry, do you have?
Only questions. Thank you.
Mr. Parsons, anything on the harassment?
I'm all set.
Okay. Mr. Stadman, and I'm good with that policy as well. So, with that, we're going to move on to old business and our summer reading participation. And I assume Mrs. Regan will be doing that?
Okay. Yes, what you have in front of you is informational only. It's an update on our summer reading program. I've provided you with a breakdown of our participation rates for our various grade levels. I have to say, we are all quite pleased with the participation rate, especially after such a difficult school year and a much-needed summer break. You'll see the numbers are quite impressive, especially in our upper grades. I really want to thank you all our students, and thank you to all of our students and parents who participated in the summer reading. We know that summer reading not only kickstarts good classroom discussions when our kiddos come back to school, they certainly begin the first writing prompt in classrooms. But we know more than anything, the more a child reads, the better they are prepared for success at school. I do want to draw your attention to the numbers at the top of the memo that you have. These numbers represent students that were with us at the end of the school year, minus any new incoming students. And you saw in the enrollment, our current total student population is 3,193 students. So, this is minus the 283 new students that came into our district once we posted summer reading. And of our 223 kindergarten students, even though they all get that packet when they register, it's nice to see that 66% of our kiddos, 66 students did participate with their parent. So, again, thank you to all of our families, our teachers, who collect all this information and get it back to us so that you can see the participation in our schools.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, great. That takes us to the Tewksbury Diversity Equity and Inclusion Advisory Council. And I'm gonna turn that over to Mr. Malone. And just so everyone's aware, this is a committee, townwide committee that was formed and set up by the Tewksbury Selectmen.
Correct, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it is the Tewksbury Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory, which is appointed by the Tewksbury Board of Selectmen. The general purpose of this committee is the town of Tewksbury DEI Advisory Committee strives to reaffirm the worth and dignity of every human being. Tewksbury's diversity will be embraced and celebrated through the following activities: educate, advocate, and celebrate. The charge of the committee from the Board of Selectmen is to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion, and build stronger, more unified, welcoming town that respects and recognizes both growing diversity and its commonalities. To nurture a community that promotes and encourages respect for all its residences, residents, businesses, religions, town employees, nonprofit organizations, cultures, and guests. To foster respectful, civil, reflective, public conversation. Under the Board of Selectmen criteria for membership, they have listed indirect relation to the school department, the school superintendent, and his, in his or her designee. In this case, this will be Ms. Karen Baker O'Brien, Director of Student and Family Support, who does a great deal of this work. We think she'll be a great asset to that committee. Also, a student representative from high school age. The high school has already put out a selection process, is working with the town manager to determine a high school student, and it may be more than one, which is one of the pieces that the high school principal is actually advocating for. And the final member that impacts the school department is one school committee member or its designee. So, Mr. Chair, that is an outline of the Tewksbury Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee.
Okay. Thank you. With that, I'll open it up for dialogue, and we'll start with Mrs. Garabedian.
I'd actually like to make a motion that we defer this until our next meeting, and all members are here to discuss.
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to table the Tewksbury Diversity Equity Inclusion Advisory Committee to the August 13 meeting. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? And the chair votes aye as well. Thank you for that motion, Mrs. Garabedian. That way, Mrs. Demos can be included in that. That's a wonderful idea. With that, that's gonna take us to new business. Just briefly, the naming of the new school. We are not naming the new school this evening. The policy is very clear with regards to naming new facilities. Tonight was just simply our way and our opportunity to allow the public to comment additionally. Any submission of a name for the school space can be made by any resident or by the superintendent in writing, and should be made to the school committee chair. If a name is being initiated at the local school level, the principal must take reasonable steps to include the school council and PAC in the nomination of the name before submission to the school committee. The written request should specify the intent of the requister and the reason why this particular name would fit the facility. It should offer appropriate background information on persons or organization after which the facility should be named. So, with that, I know we have already, Mrs. Regan has done some diligence, and I'll turn it over to you in one second. She has already done some diligence on this issue through our Elementary School Building Committee, and they have put forward some names. I'll just read them here tonight. The Center School or the Center Elementary School, the Ames School, Anne Sullivan School, Foster School, or is that Enoch Foster School?
Yes.
The Miko Kaufman, the North Crayhan Elementary, the Ryan Elementary, or Tewksbury Upper Elementary, Wamisett Elementary. And we actually have already received an email request in writing that also has put forward the Pleasant Street Elementary School. So, we will be taking this up as official business on our October meeting. If anyone out there from the general public has a name they would like to put forward, they can please forward that information to the chair. We will make a list and compile all those names, and we will undergo that process starting at our October 13, I believe it is, meeting.
Correct.
All right. Mrs. Regan, anything to add?
Just would add this, that we do have townwide PAC on Monday, and we'll be sharing this list with the all-school PACs.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, all-school councils, so they have an opportunity to see the suggestions that have been made so far.
Great. And any questions for my colleagues?
No questions.
None at this time.
Great. Would you like to proceed with the MCAS update, please?
Would I? Well, here we are. And this is an informational-only piece of new business. And this is our school year 2122, MCAS entire testing window. So, you know, if you've been with us here long enough and maybe new from Mr. Parsons, I first share the entire testing window. We publish that to our school calendar, so parents can plan. And then, what we do in the next couple of months is work together and collaboratively with our building principals and our tech team to narrow those testing windows down to very specific dates for grade levels and content areas. And that really helps our schools plan their own events and helps parents plan their own scheduling with their children. So, you will hear more from me on the schedule, maybe once or twice, in the upcoming months. I do not have specific MCAS achievement updates tonight for the Tewksbury Public Schools, but I can give you just some broad updates. As the data was just released a day ago, what we know, and you've probably read, is that the whole state of Massachusetts saw a decline in English Language Arts achievement across the board, except for in 10th grade. We saw that the entire state average for all grade levels in math saw a decline as well. I think you'll agree with me, we're not really surprised at that data. We haven't taken a deep enough dive to really give you specifics about Tewksbury, but one thing that we're very pleased is, Tewksbury Public Schools had very impressive participation rates for all students, in-person and remote learners. We're seeing 99 to 100% participation. So, I'll share more about that with you. As I said, we're just beginning to look and digest the data at the school level and hope to give you more info at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Regan. Any comments, Mrs. Garabedian?
No comments. Look forward to next month.
Mr. Parsons?
And just as a point of clarification, the way that the MCAS were scaled the scores, that would be on the same scale as previous scores?
Yes.
Previous year's scores?
Next generation had the same scale score, achievement levels, and legacy had the same as previous legacy scale scores.
So, the focus of looking at data is, it's more so looking at how much, how much learning loss have we had rather than achievement?
You know, that is exactly what we're gonna look at the data for, is how do we target learning loss and in what content areas are grade levels the most. Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Mr. Stadman?
Good. Look forward to the schedule.
And I have no questions as well, Mrs. Regan.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to an open-meeting law complaint that we received, an open-meeting law complaint dated September 16, 2021. I have disseminated the complaint to the members of the committee as required by law. The law also requires the committee to meet to review the complaint within 14 business days. This meeting, we are meeting to review the complaint. The public body must respond to the complaint in writing and must send the complaint in a response and a description of any action the public body has taken to address the allegations in the complaint. At the time, the body must send the Attorney General a copy of the complaint and a copy of the response. The public body may delegate this responsibility to an individual member of the public body, its council, or a staff member, but only after the public body has met to review the complaint. The public body at issue in the complaint is each building's school council, and as such, the school committee does not have personal knowledge on which to respond to the complaint. The school committee has recently voted at our August 18 meeting to schedule additional open-meeting law training for our members, Superintendent Malone, Assistant Superintendent Regan, School Secretary, School Committee Secretary Gail Johnson, and our school council members as well. Some have already attended this training via a webinar, and additionally, in-person training will be held in October as well. It would be my recommendation at this time, the school committee votes to delegate the responsibility to respond to the complaint to Superintendent Malone, working with legal counsel.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any discussion? I have a motion and a second to vote to delegate the responsibility to respond to the complaint to Superintendent Malone, working with legal counsel. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? The chair votes aye as well. And moving on to school committee matters of interest. We'll start with you, Mr. Parsons.
I have none at this time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Garabedian?
None at this time. Just keep the wellness in mind.
Thank you, Mrs. Garabedian. Mr. Stadman?
I have none at this time. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. And I have none as well. Our future school committee meeting dates, we will be at special town meeting on October 5, but it is not an official, regularly-scheduled school committee business meeting. Our next meeting, as mentioned earlier, is October 13, 2021, and November 17, 2021 is the following meeting after that. We do have Elementary School Building Committee, October 14, November 18. The CPAC meeting, September 30, Mr. Parsons, I think. Yep?
Yeah, it is correct.
Thank you. October 21, November 18, December 16, January 20, February 17. Tewksbury CPAC, who's to be determined, Safety Subcommittee, the Wellness Advisory Committee, November 10, March 23, and May 18. And the Policy Subcommittee is to be determined by the members on that committee. With that, do I have any future agenda items for my colleagues this evening?
Yes, I have one.
Yep.
Just for clarity, am I allowed to ask that an agenda item be put on a Subcommittee?
Sure.
Okay. So, I'd just like to put the student travel policy on the agenda for the Policy Subcommittee.
Okay. The student travel policy? I just want to make sure I have it right.
Yeah, I'm blanking on the letter code, but the
That's right.
Policy for students going on trips and traveling. Just so we can get the ball rolling on that, since we have some coming up.
Absolutely. All right. Mrs. Garabedian?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Stadman?
I'm good.
All right. With that, Mrs. Garabedian?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
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 Chair votes aye as well. Thank you very much for attending, and have a good evening.